Call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. I will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Would someone like to take us into non-public? I'll make a motion to go into non-public for RSA 91- A. We will walk to CK.
Second.
Great. Roll call vote. Rick.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Jim.
Yep.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jamie.
I.
And myself, yes. All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Budget Committee at 7:03, and we'll rise to say the pledge first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When do a roll call? I see visibly that everyone's present. Want to start, Ken?
I'm Ken Anthony.
Ken McNulty.
Christine Kosmiski.
Dan Guide.
Vanessa Matias.
Courtney Hewitt.
Annie Collier. The first thing on our agenda is to, well, we're having a joint meeting with the school board. So I know you guys all know they've already come out of a non-public and they've already assembled and called their meeting to order, so we're very happy to have a meeting with you on the budget planning. We have on the agenda approval of the minutes of 11:02, and I'd like to table that for our next meeting, if that's okay for everybody. And we can move on to Tom, if he's here. Where's Tom?
Do we have to do the public hearing?
What?
We have to do the public hearing on the
Okay, go ahead. Yes.
So we, a public hearing on donations of $25,000 grant from Promising Futures, New Hampshire DOE. Matt?
Okay. The $25,000 Promising Futures grant is coming from the New Hampshire Department of Education, Bureau of Student Wellness and Nutrition, and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services Bureau for Drug and Alcohol Services, for the purpose of advancing the development and expansion of strategic substance misuse prevention strategies and interventions, as well as other universal prevention strategies. For example, we'll be sending our student assistant counselor to a training to become a trainer on evidence-based practice called Catch My Breath, a youth nicotine vaping prevention program that will provide our students with the skills to resist peer pressure and media influence to try e-cigarettes. He will then train relevant staff on the program to support vaping prevention with our students. Another example is that the money will be allowed to be used for us to bring in someone like Lynn Lyons, an international speaker and psychotherapist based in Concord, who can train staff and families on how to manage anxiety disorders.
Now we have the public.
Yeah, we have to have the public.
Motion. Do you need a motion to accept? We have to allow, so if the public has anything, comment or question.
You can't hear them.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think the mics are on.
The mic's on. You hear?
Okay. That's all right.
You want me to ask? My voice carries.
I'll use my mom voice. How's that? Okay. Mom voice and microphone, not a good combination. So since this is a public hearing, if anyone in the public has any questions or comments, now is the time to ask. All right, since no one is jumping up, we need a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Unanimous. Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Very generous donation.
Yeah, that's great. Next on our agenda is for the superintendent to share portions of the hundreds of questions that came in about budget recommendation that he has given to the school board and the Budget Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Ambrose?
Before we do that, we have a brief video of our chorus performing at a recent event. Always like to start these things with the students in our focus.
(Music)
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 Dan, I shared the slides with you so that you can project.
Great. Yep. And I think the first few slides, Shara Dutton is going to manage, and then I'll take the podium and share.
I know, and it's hard because I can really, I can really see. Three, four, five, three through seven.
And Dan's logging in and getting the memo.
I was just confirming.
Oh. Yes. Thank you.
So many questions. A quick ease.
Sounds like it's going to blow up.
Are we going to take off?
Yeah, really.
Right there.
Thanks. Can you be the clicker for me? Do you mind? Or? No, no spacebar.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll be here.
Great. All right. Thanks. So Dawn will take the first four or five slides, and then I'll take the rest.
Am I doing it from here or?
You can come up here if you want to.
Or not, if you don't.
I'm good. I don't love presenting, but I thought it was important. I know there have been a few questions on these topics, so I thought it was really important that as the school board representative, I kind of present these and then give some answers. Is that closer? Is that better? No? No? I think it sounds like we have a helicopter taking off, so I don't know if that's not helping. All right. Is that better? Okay. And I have a massive headache, so I'm hoping that I can read this clearly. Okay, so question, so we're talking about the non-union administrations. So question 26. A, B, C, and D. I will read through all of them. I'm not going to read that really big, long number. Admin salaries, SAU, how many positions does this cover and what positions are they exactly? Superintendent, the superintendent has a listed salary in the budget book of $167,518. The position has a listed salary in the actual contract of $161,368. The position has a listed salary of $163,432 in the admin salary spreadsheet Matt Angel sent the Budcom listing all position salaries. Please confirm which of the three listed salaries are correct. Superintendent tax-deferred annuity, is this line the $35,500 that is referred to in the superintendent's contract as tax-deferred annuity? Is there an explanation as to why this number is so high when the rest of the administration is only getting $2,000 match contributions? Superintendent total salary calculation, is there a reason that the contracted tax-deferred annuity payment to the superintendent position is not included when listing total salary? The form showing the superintendent salary do not include this additional $35,500 in compensation to the position that is being paid out yearly? If you add the two pieces of the true salary from the budget book given to the community, $167,518 plus the $35,500, the real salary for the superintendent position at Sanborn is actually $203,018 for the 22, 23, 24 school year? I believe it is important to be fully transparent when sharing numbers with taxpayers, community? Should we fix this oversight? Then the answer. The negotiated salary for the superintendent for '23, I should say '24, is $161,368, and the account included in the question relates to the superintendent. Contributions to employee benefits such as healthcare, 403B plans, and other benefits are not part of the calculation of an employee's base salary. Additionally, payroll, taxes, FICA, workers' comp, and contributions to New Hampshire retirement, while certainly part of the cost of employment, are clearly not part of an employee's base salary. The district reports the base salaries of all of its employees in the same manner in the annual report. All district employees, including central office administrators, like the superintendent, are treated the same in this regard. The board reduced the superintendent's base salary by $6,000 and made an additional contribution in that amount to the 403B plan. And the district's total contribution to the superintendent's 403B plan is now $35,500 for the '22, '23 school year. Moving part of the superintendent's base wage to a tax-deferred annuity saved the district the cost of FICA, New Hampshire retirement, workers' comp, and unemployment. This saves the district approximately $7,500 annually. The superintendent's salary and all other administrator salaries and compensation are public information. The superintendent's salary was negotiated with the school board and was voted on publicly by the school board. The board and superintendent fully support transparency and have consistently demonstrated this important belief for many years. To be clear, while we could certainly provide additional information on the actual cost of employment to the taxpayers, there have been no mistakes or oversights regarding the listing of employee salaries in the district. In fact, to show the most full cost of an employee and/or call the calculation a real salary would not only violate the plain language on the warrant article, but it would further confuse the voters and taxpayers. Next question. Business administrator. The business administrator has listed salary in the budget book of $122,039. The contract provided shows the position's contract ends after this current school year. The position has a listed salary of $122,039 in the admin salary spreadsheet Matt Angel sent the Budcom listing all positional salaries. Is the '23, '24 salary for the position just an estimated placeholder? There is no expected salary increase for this position? Answer, the new student services director will be receiving $125,000 plus other negotiated amounts. This contract was recently settled, and a budget adjustment will be recommended to the school board. And lastly, question, director. Yeah. Yes, right. Just making sure. This is director of curriculum twice. I was going, wait a second, did I read that twice? Clicked on the wrong slide. Director of curriculum, the director of curriculum has a listed salary in the budget book of $122,400. The position has a listed salary in the actual contract of $122,400. The position has a listed salary of $120,000 in the admin salary spreadsheet Matt Angel sent the Budcom listing all positional salaries. Please confirm which of the two salary, two listed salaries is correct? Answer, $122,400 is the contract amount for fiscal year '24 and is included in the default operating budget. $120,000 is the contracted amount for the current fiscal year. So I just wanted to kind of add a little bit of, a little more context to some of that. So ultimately, the benefits for employees are confidential, but the superintendent has given me permission to share this information because I know there's always a lot of questions about, you know, what, how much does he make? How much do people make? We can't always share all the information, but I thought it might be important to share some of the things here. So the slideshow, the superintendent will receive $161,368 in salary and $35,500 in a tax-deferred annuity for the '23, '24, for '23, '24 school year, but that's not the whole story. Contracts are complicated, so I wanted to take a moment and share some of the things that you don't see. First, at this time, the superintendent doesn't take our health insurance, which is a net savings to us of over $30,000 for you. By replacing, by placing his raises in the tax-deferred annuity, the district saves over $7,500 per year on retirement, FICA, and other costs. The district also saves percentage, the percentage on future raises on that money because the annual percentage increases. One point a lot of people don't know is that he almost never takes or exercises his contractual option to go to national conferences, which can cost up to $4,000 per year. There are also fees associated with the superintendent's doctorate included in that salary. The board asked him to earn a doctorate when he was hired. He's doing that work for us, and we're now really getting to see the benefit, how that benefits and supports the work being done across the district. As a school board chair, I want all of you to know that we, as a board, work collaboratively with the superintendent. We are in communication with him weekly, and while we may not know every detail of every single thing going on in every building, we're constantly being updated on all the key items. Our sole, as our sole employee, one of our jobs is to oversee, evaluate the activities of the superintendent, and negotiate his contract. Because of the amount of time that we spend working with him, we, as the current board and past boards, have had full confidence to support his contracts with unanimous public votes. Also, we, the school board, interview administrative candidates and approve administrator contracts per policy. So if anyone has any questions or concerns about leadership, please don't hesitate to call me at any time. Happy to talk about it. But, you know, in closing, we really, we have some very difficult things ahead of us. We need to improve student achievement in reading and mathematics. We also have to take care of our facilities, so we're inviting everyone to partner with us to make sure we can get this important work done. Thank you.
So the next section in the presentation is the SAU lease. These are important items that we felt needed to be publicly discussed so that we could give folks the information that they need to correctly address false information, particularly that's on fake book. Question 25, regarding the SAU property lease of $72,000. What was part of the original lease agreement? What is the new total lease amount annually, and are there any more projected increases for the remainder of the lease? SAU office, what is the cost of the rental of the SAU office, and how many people work within the SAU building? Electric car charging station at the SAU office, what was the cost of the electric car charging station at the SAU office, and how was that funded? Support staff salaries, SAU, how many positions does this cover and what positions exactly? The answers are, the Church Street Office contract was extended by the school board, and the rent was negotiated. The current agreement is for five years. I do want to also note that was done in public and is a part of public minutes. The current agreement is for
You lost the screen, so hold on.
Yeah, there's not that slide what you were reading.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry, I was looking at my computer, not his. Okay. Try again. The Church Street Office contract was extended by the school board, and I do want to remind everyone that was done in a public meeting. The rent was renegotiated. The current agreement is for five years, and that amount annually is FY '23, $81,000; FY '24, $84,000; FY '25, $87,500; FY '26, $96,000; and FY '27, $93,780. The lease includes hot water, electricity, heat, and taxes. 22 people work at the SAU, including the Technology Department, which was displaced when the Sanborn Seminary property was sold. The Special Education Department, the Business Office, members of the Facilities Department, Human Resources, the Director of Teaching Learning, and the Office of the Superintendent. This lease also includes a much-needed conference room that is used for many meetings that are important to the district. The exterior 50 amp outlet was a one-time install cost of approximately $1,500. That was done in the summer of 2020, and that was done as part of the business administrator's negotiated contract. He gave up an annual raise to get the install. So that means that you're saving almost $2,000 a year annually for a one-time cost of $1,500. There's no cost for the electricity to the outlet, as the electricity is included in the lease. The support staff salaries include the HR director and the administrative assistant to the superintendent. Health insurance, a lot of questions about health insurance. They're really great questions, and they're important to be totally transparent about. Overall, we're budgeting $5.996 million versus 2022 actual spending of $4.532 million. What is the justification for a 32% increase? So that it's important to note that the question is asking the actual spending versus the budget, not the year-to-year. What percent is being used for calculating insurance for the 2024 proposed budget versus the current budget, and when are the new rates supposed to be released from the insurance companies? Were these assumptions applied to both the proposed budget and the default budget? So the answer is, the insurance was budgeted for an increase of 12% over the current year actual cost, not the, not the actual spending. Insurance is a variable that we truly cannot predict. It's based on new hires and potential changes in costs due to changes in plans. The plan choice is made by each employee, and if employee moves from a single family, a single-person plan to the most expensive yellow with choice fund plan, that goes from roughly $10,000, $12,672. They move up to the next plan for the double, which is a couple plan, it goes to $25,344. And if they move from that to a family cost, it's $34,212. Right? So it's a significant variance. And we did an analysis of how many people we have on each plan right now, and there's a massive room for move. We have a lot of people on single and two-person plans. And so it's important to note that we were looking at whether or not we could minimize this amount to lower the operating and default budget, and we feel nervous about that because the rate came in at 10.5 to 10.6, which is by far the highest it's come in in six years that I've been here. We've had it come in at, what was the lowest it ever came in at, Matt? Two? 1.5 to 2? Yeah, we've had 1.5 to 2. We've had six.
I think the first year I did the budget, we put in a 10% increase. We dropped it down to six, and I think it came in at four.
Yeah. So. Yep. It's really challenging, and it was not good this year, unfortunately. We had hoped for six. Next, professional development. This is a very important topic because it's the heart and soul of what we need to do to move the district forward. There's $118,000 budgeted in this function code, professional improvement. Where is the professional development agreed to in the CBA? I'm sorry, is this where the professional development agreed to in the CBA are located? What is the amount budgeted for the agreed CBA personal development? And also, $107,000 is being budgeted for professional development, object code 53220. Which specific programs are being used for this development for $107,000? So this is something that was greatly affected by the pandemic because we didn't have professional development opportunities for a couple of years, the way that we did prior to the pandemic. We were working with the Teachers College at Columbia University to improve instruction, and it was going very well. The first training in the summer of 2019 had great attendance and a very positive impact in the terms of the receptiveness of our staff to the idea of changing instruction. Sadly, during the pandemic, we've only been able to really focus on mathematics instruction. So this is not the professional development funds in the collective bargaining agreement. It's the money to fund initiatives for the district. The monies in the collective bargaining agreement are a teacher choice. This money is district choice. It's basically designed to drive and support change in instruction, and the monies will be used next year for the elementary literacy programs because we have some real needs at that level. So to primarily focus on Bakey and Memorial for the next year. SST, the Seacoast School of Technology is highly attended by our students, and so folks were asking about the assumptions that went into the $70,000 estimate. How many SST slots are currently planned, and what is the five-year enrollment from Sanborn? How many students are enrolled in ELOs? And are there students in both ELOs and SST? What is the five-year trend in ELOs? So we shared a bunch of information on this slide. I won't read it all for you. Can you go to the next slide? Yep. So, but I will, I want to talk to you about the SST tuition. So you can see the numbers of kids in ELOs have gone up dramatically, 33 in 2018 to 19, up to 2022, 2023. There are 74 students during semester one and a total of 120 for the year, with eight students that are doing both SST and completing an ELO. Here's the key, this program is fantastic. It helps kids to connect their learning to the real world. The SST program is also fantastic. If any of you have never toured the Seacoast School of Technology, I highly recommend asking the director for a tour and going over and doing a tour. It's amazing. The automotives program is one of the finest examples of public education I've ever seen. It's completely modern, totally connected to the real-world application. They have the full computer systems for people to learn how to treat, diagnose, and work on cars. We had 108 students in 2018 and 19. It dropped pretty low in the heart of the pandemic because the kids couldn't do the hands-on component, and we're seeing it come back up. This year, we have 66 students, but here's the problem. In 2019, '20, as part of the Executive Board for the SST, I warned the board, it's all the superintendents at the SST, from the sending schools, we all meet and discuss the contracts. They made the decision to spend, to spread the special education costs across all students instead of having students with an IEP pay an additional fee, similar to how we structured our tuition with Fremont. I told them at that time, for a small district, that's a great thing. If you only send 10 students and you have two with an IEP, you only have to pay a difference on eight other students. But for places like us, where you're sending 70 or 80 or 100 students, it's a massive increase of cost, almost $100,000. I warned them that eventually it would create a situation where the cost per pupil would outstrip the district's ability to pay and then create lower enrollments, which would then increase the cost even more. That was very concerning. I gave a very passionate, if anyone runs into Pete Broderick, ask him about the meeting at SST when I spoke about how concerned I was about this, and it has proven to be true. Because if you lose 331 in 1920, up to 3,254. Well, okay, if you're sending 10 kids, it's a $10,000 increase, but if you're sending 108, it's a significant sum of money. Now it's up to $3,000 It's basically designed to to drive and support change and instruction. And the monies will be used next year for the elementary literacy programs because we have some real needs at that level. So to primarily focus on baking and memorial for the next year. S S T. The Seacoast School of Technology is highly highly attended by our students. And so folks were asking about the assumptions that went into the seventy thousand dollar estimate. How many S S T slots are currently planned and what is the five year enrollment from Sanborn? How many students are enrolled in E L Os? And are there students in both E L Os and S S T? What is the five year trend in E L Os? So we shared a bunch of information on this slide. I won't read it all for you. Can you go to the next slide? Yep. So but I will, I want to talk to you about the S S T tuition. So you can see the numbers of kids in E L Os have gone up dramatically, thirty three in two thousand eighteen to nineteen up to two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three. There are seven seventy four students during semester one and a total of one hundred and twenty for the year with eight students that are doing both S S T and completing an E L O. Here's the key, this program is fantastic. It helps kids to connect their learning to the real world. The S S T program is also fantastic. If any of you have never toured the Seacoast School of Technology, I highly recommend asking the director for a tour and going over and doing a tour. It's amazing. It it, the automotives program is one of the finest examples of public education I've ever seen. It's completely modern, totally connected to the real world application. They have the full computer systems for people to learn how to treat, diagnose and and work on cars. We had a hundred and eight students in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. It dropped pretty low in the heart of the pandemic because the kids couldn't do the handle hands on component. And we're seeing it come back up. This year we have sixty six students, but here's the problem. In two thousand nineteen twenty, as part of the executive board for the S S T, I warned the the board, it's all the superintendents at the S S T from the sending schools, we all meet and discuss the contracts. They made the decision to spend, to spread the special education costs across all students instead of having students with an I E P pay an additional fee similar to how we structured our tuition with Fremont. I told them at that time for a small district, that's a great thing. If you only send ten students and you have two with an I E P, you only have to pay a difference on eight other students. But for places like us where you're sending seventy or eighty or a hundred students, it's a massive increase of cost, almost a hundred thousand dollars. I warned them that eventually it would create a situation where the the cost per pupil would outstrip the district's ability to pay and then create lower enrollments, which would then increase the cost even more. That was very concerning. I I gave a very passionate. If anyone runs into Pete Broderick, ask him about the meeting at S S T when I spoke about how concerned I was about this. And it has proven to be true. Because if you three hundred and thirty one in nineteen twenty up to three thousand, two hundred and fifty four. Well, okay, if you're sending ten kids, it's a ten thousand dollar increase. But if you're sending a hundred and eight, it's a significant sum of money. Now it's up to three thousand, five hundred and twenty seven because what is happening is less students are going because other districts can't afford it. So there's a point where we have to decide, are we going to have a cap on our S S T costs? Are we going to say to students, we only have this many seats at the S S T? I want you to hear from me that that is heartbreaking. I don't want that at all. I don't advocate for it. I don't believe in it. But we need to have a transparent and public conversation about it so that everyone understands why the costs are going up. And I just want you to know, I I didn't, I was new when this happened. It was my second year. And I really put some relationships at risk with how passionate I was about how much I disagreed with changing the funding model and what it might do to the program because I this is one of the best programs for our kids. I really support this. Okay, so that's sorry to take so long on that slide, but it's really important to understand it. All right, next slide. Current initiatives. Curriculum, including leveling. A P C P honors along with intervention. Please discuss the curriculum development, costs and measurements for success at all grades. Please include a discussion of what is being done to manage the current master schedule. What new initiatives are being supported by the proposed budget? We believe that this question is focused on the high school, so we'll answer accordingly. I haven't heard feedback. We don't know who asks the questions when we answer them so that we're not biased. I hope we answered this well, but if we didn't, just feel free to give me a call. Our plan for addressing the low class size enrollments at the high school is as follows. Number one. Course registrations for high school occur usually between January and February. The high school and middle school need to reorganize the art, physical education and technology instruction so that they're no longer sharing staff in those areas. And it's really hard to explain. Ms. Mitchinson can go into it in detail for the members of the group that are sitting at her table tonight because she she'd be happy to talk about it. But basically, we've got a full time teaching load but split across across three teachers in phys ed, art and technology. And it will be more efficient with the S S T schedule to just place a teacher at the middle school for those areas. We're already teaching that number of sections anyway. Jen will be happy to explain. We need to offer honors and college prep courses, if that's what we choose to call them at the high school. The high school teachers have told me directly in my meetings with them that they feel that they could handle it much better if they had two to three levels of students in one class, not six or eight. So they want to have, the teachers want to have honors and college prep courses at the high school. And then we need to consider all of the staffing allocations with all of that done and broken out. Again, Mrs. Mitchinson is handling this and she would be happy to talk to you about it. Once all of these factors are considered, the administrative team will meet, including the principals, will work together to analyze the staffing and make decisions about allocations as we've done annually for six years. We're actively working on curriculum alignment and intervention as part of N E A S process and the strategic plan. For more information, please see the Sanborn Regional School District Strategic Plan here. And no, no, we can keep going. C I P plan. This is important. I I agree. I I don't know who gave the feedback, but they basically said there there are a lot of things on the C I P, so I really want to talk about these. And one of them I presented in my budget presentation. The technology equipment, what sources of funding are we looking at for that? Please give a five year history of technology equipment, spending and the funding sources and the operating budget grants, facilities revolving fund and any others. What is the long term planning? Okay, so what what? We tried to answer this in a concise way, but we could provide the person with more information. They all they have to do is contact me and we'll we'll share even more. But for general public consumption, almost everything that's been replaced over the last few years has come from the facilities use revolving fund for grants. I don't agree with that, but I understand it. We budgets have been tricky. So prior to COVID years ago, the funding was built into the operating budget, but it was not always spent to replace what was needed. That's what we should be doing in the future is putting the technology stuff in the. The the goal is to have items such as staff laptops, student Chromebooks and student iPads built into the operating budget in one fifth of the year. Other equipment like servers. Your replacement plan. And that will probably be discussed as part of the capital improvement conversation, but it does need to be discussed as a team. I know, I'm sorry about the heat. There's, we have a broken sensor and we can't get it fixed. Matt, can we get someone over to manually adjust it? Okay. Yeah, just shut it down. I think we'll be plenty warm for the next couple of hours. I'm dying up here in this coat. I just wanted to say that that, you know, the technology department is working on that replacement plan and it's going to be an important part of our budgeting moving forward. For this year, we have decided to look at using year end funds or preferably the facilities use revolving fund because we're concerned about the the size of the, just the, just the just the default budget alone is one point six million dollars. That's almost six hundred thousand dollars more than we've ever recommended. We're nervous about that for another reason that I'll talk about in a few minutes. The high school in the baking school parking. Please elaborate on this item and what determines the level of need and what is the proposed source of funding? So we are at the beginning point of evaluating the need. The D J baking elementary school will be in need of parking, particularly when the seminary property is no longer available. So I'll give you a really good example. I went to the open house at the baking school with the families. The parking lot or the whole seminary was just parked. I I mean, it was kind of comical. People were parked everywhere. Grass, parking lot. That won't be available once the work over there starts. So that's going to be a problem for us and we just wanted to be proactive about it and transparent that it's an upcoming need. At the high school, we're going to have to have a conversation about whether or not students need to drive to school because I I frankly feel that that the high school was not built with enough parking for eleven hundred students. They're opening the windows. Sorry. We we don't, I had a coffee for the superintendent here the other day and the parents, fourteen people showed up. They couldn't find a place to park. It's really challenging and it's not because we moved the middle school. It's because there's not enough parking to accommodate an eleven hundred student building. The question is, are we going to add to the parking? Or are we going to mandate that juniors have a lottery or a reason to have parking? That's up to the board. That's going to be a public discussion, but I want it to happen and I want it to be transparent and I want parents and students to have the opportunity to speak for what they believe is important and then the board can make a decision about what to do. All right, next slide. Capital improvements, discussion requested. Five year average across all buildings is approximately three hundred and seventeen thousand per year. And we have zero dollars allocated, not even one dollar. Still no capital improvements budgeted through two thousand twenty four. Why are there zero budgeted for, why is there a zero budgeted for capital improvements when our five year average expenditure is three hundred and thirty three thousand, three hundred and nineteen twelve? We should probably start budgeting for this at some point. I just want to say I agree. I totally agree and and so does the administrative team. It's a major area of concern and the administration feels that the recommended budget does not have this account. But we are considering money for capital improvement as we move forward. The school board just adopted this capital plan and that should lead to open discussion, planning and budgeting for these items. You can click on the link to see the plan. But we are actually recommending a warrant article for future capital improvements with the location of the money to be determined. So we're going to work with our legal counsel to write the warrant articles so that it's for the amount, not the project. So Matt and I have been talking at length and we have some ideas about this. We would like the board and Budcom to discuss this through the budget process. Next. I think this is a similar question, which is really about the C I P plan and and having it pass. I I'll just read the answer to this. Yep. So financing for the capital improvement plan is an ongoing process. And I just wanted to talk about the five basic funding sources that we could look at for that. One is the separate warrant articles, which I just talked about. Another is leasing, depending on what the items are that might particularly pay for or support technology. The use of year end funds, capital reserve fund and the facility use revolving fund. So I want to be clear that we're not advocating for any one of these independently. We may use a combination as well. But we need to have an open conversation about it now that the plan is done. And I just want to remind everyone that not taking care of this is serious. We have a major water problem right here. It needs to be addressed and we were talking about it. Matt and I have been very open and transparent about our concerns for the district. And and we are very concerned about the memorial school. The portables at the memorial school are very old. They need to be addressed. This building is now many years old. It looks great, but it's old. The main office is going to need new carpets soon. It's getting worn out. You can't run a building for sixteen years with lots of people in it without without keeping it in shape or it starts to fall into disrepair. So I urge everyone to take this seriously or we're going to end up with another situation where the building is falling apart and it will be too late to deal with. Intervention. Very important topic. Have all the positions for the intervention been filled? How many positions are there total? And how many are funded and how many are unfilled? What is the total amount funded for those positions? So this is complicated and important. So baking is fully funded in generally running an intervention program of three reading teachers and three math teachers because we could not hire the paraprofessionals that we wanted. We combined positions and hired teachers and that was shared with the board. The board voted for that in November of last year in public, I believe. I'd have to look that up to be sure. Memorial has one reading and one math interventionist at this time. Middle school has one reading and one one math and they have open para positions. And I do think we need to adjust this slide. I think memorial might have another open para position as well. I'll have to double check. At the high school, there's one reading and one math teacher. They are all teachers. There are no paras because we couldn't get any para applications this summer. But oh, can you go back for one second? There's, there's one really important thing to understand here. This is kind of like one of those, you know, you know, like when you, when you're saying yes, but you're shaking your head no. There's a real problem here. We have some issues where we have some long, long term openings in the district and we don't have a long term sub to cover them. So right now at memorial, the math interventionist is teaching third grade. I need a third grade teacher that badly. We can't find, we've had three people teed up to take that position and they accepted a job somewhere else for higher pay. And it's because a long term sub is based on our bachelor's one salary. And this is part of the reason why our teacher's contract is so important to pass next year and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Legal. Some great questions. There are high legal fees even before COVID. Why are the legal fees for the district so high? These numbers started to considerably climb before COVID. Look at the one hundred and six, one hundred thousand, sixty six dollars and forty three cents that was spent in the eighteen nineteen school year before COVID. That year, there was almost a one hundred percent jump in costs from the seventeen eighteen school year. Again, it all started before COVID exclamation point. How do we limit these costs going forward? Have we approached any other legal counsel about getting better rates than we're currently receiving? Or have we worked on ways to minimize our reliance on legal counsel in general? There are no codes associated with this question. We have legal fees in both special education and regular education. So I can't, couldn't verify, it doesn't matter. The, we use attorneys on an as needed basis. I was the superintendent in seventeen eighteen and I'll tell you now, we had very few issues in seventeen eighteen until until I started digging into what was going on in the district. And I can assure you with absolute certainty that there were problems, serious problems. Personnel matters that weren't addressed. Legal issues that I can't share with you and will never be able to share with you. The board knows what they need to know about the legal costs, but that's done in non-public and it will not be shared. We use attorneys for very important legal costs. But you can't compare it to other districts because no two districts face the same legal issues in one year. We also fared way better than other districts with regard to keeping school open during COVID. It was expensive to manage the complex legal matters associated with COVID and the benefit to the students was having school open. Our legal services are excellent and we will not renegotiate the rates. They're already giving us a break on pricing. I appreciate the advice or the idea, but of course, we've looked at other places and prices, but the service that we get is fantastic. I want to remind you that in six years, we've never been to court. We've never had a due process. We've never had a grievance. We've never had a special education lawsuit. And that's because we use these funds effectively. It's important to note that any confidential settlements are included in these lines are in addition to attorney fees. And if you would like to discuss legal costs further, please feel free to schedule a meeting with me. I'm happy to talk about it. Can you go to the next one? So again, legal fees, this item was not addressed sufficiently. I don't think my previous answer was given before this question was asked, so I'm going to just flip over and and give you the answer to some more legal stuff. So our legal costs are based on need and typically we seek legal advice, including but not limited to the following categories. One is contract negotiations. Two is personnel matters. Dealing, which by the way, personnel matters is the number one thing that costs district significant sums of money. The second one is special education, which is number four. We have legal costs for dealing with the public, asking questions that require legal guidance. Student discipline, school board questions, policy issues, budget committee questions, middle school lease with the S L C, Fremont tuition negotiations, the sale of the seminary, interpretation of legislative changes and their impact on the district, which I want you to know have been incredibly significant in the last three years. The Title Nine laws around sexual harassment of loan have cost us a significant amount of money, but the money paid off because it saved us lawsuits because our administrators were trained, trained in the model. That training for legislative changes that have impact on the daily activity of staffs. We're having to do another round of Title Nine training because we have so many new staff members. We have had some significant personnel matters prior to COVID and some very difficult contract negotiations. The legal costs associated with COVID have been high, but we anticipate they will come down over time. This year, we don't have any negotiations, so we'll save money this year. And for certain, legal costs have never been as high as the fall of two thousand twenty when we were dealing with negotiations at the same time as bringing the students back in person. Other important questions. The Budcom time concern, going forward to be beneficial if the Budcom committee had more than seven days to decipher the proposed budget document. This year, the document was three hundred and forty pages. That is asking a lot over a seven day stretch. Especially for people who have full time jobs as well, the extremely short and strict deadlines such as this have things slip through the cracks. I know this is not a really good question. I understand. But the process could use some tweaking for sure. The current setup is not optimal providing, providing for providing one's best work in this capacity. I agree completely. It's great feedback. It can definitely be addressed in the planning process. The timeline was planned months ago and it was a little tight this year and usually we have a two week window. But the calendar didn't lay out as good this year as it has in the past. One option could be that we present the budget a week earlier at the end of October. There's no rule that it has to be the first Wednesday in November. We just, that's what we've always done. Please be careful to pay attention to the calendar when it's discussed in the spring because that's the best time to discuss, discuss or consider how long we'll have to do things. And I did also want to mention that Annie had shared with me that Dan had feedback about meeting with the principals. So we changed it tonight so that you would have an opportunity to do that. We thought the principals thought that was a great idea. So we're really happy about that too. Because can you imagine listening to me for three and a half straight hours, read these? I don't want to do that. Thank you, Annie. I I'm good. I'm done already. Next, we're almost there. Thanks, Rick. All right. So the next one is about electricity and gas at the old high school campus. I think this is important to be transparent about. We still maintain the Swayze Gym in its use and both of those accounts do relate to the Swayze Gym, the grounds building, the I T office and the old middle school. There's electricity for all those locations, but only our share of the electricity at the old middle school. And there's propane for Swayze Gym only. So we we do, we do still have the Swayze Gym as a part of ours, our work in our our district. Okay, so this is the the no fat and the budget conversation that happened at the Budcom meeting that I wasn't at, which is basically the idea that three to four percent of the budget is left at the end of the year. And I just, I wanted to step in and clarify this personally. We, we, can you go to the next slide? We agree that there was a disconnect at the Budcom meeting and so I'm here to clarify that. An organization of our size should plan and spend carefully to ensure that three to four percent of the budget is available at all times. We've done that since I started working here. This isn't, you know, it's the example we sometimes use in this situation is that if you give two children twenty dollars for lunch and one spends it all and the other one brings you back ten dollars. Then, you know, that doesn't mean that the next time my son goes to lunch, I only give him ten dollars. I praise him for bringing me back ten dollars and be responsible about it. Being responsible for this budget, it doesn't mean that the budget is over or under planned. It's just good management. And it's correct that we have the authority to spend the full amount and that we budget carefully. We've never spent the full amount because we we are very careful with our finances. Having said that, inflation is real. It's a real problem and for the first time in six years, we may be looking at spending more of the over budget, overall budget this year than in years past. Schools districts cannot spend more than the approved budget plus reserve and contingency contingency accounts. The current spike in fuel costs is exactly the type of scenario that we plan for and hope to never have to spend. This is not over budgeting. It's carefully managed funds. As a team, we want our staff to feel good that we support their efforts to spend money on needs, not wants. The reality is the budget is an estimate created a year in advance. The estimates are reviewed carefully and we work hard to make sure that we maintain the trust given to us by the community. This is how we come up with the three to four percent at the end of the year. It's important to note that unfilled positions. It's important to note that unfilled positions and unspent insurance funds have made up a big part of that money that we returned at the end of the year. As I clearly stated earlier, we're not going to have that this year. Teacher negotiations. This is probably the most important question that was asked, and I'm really grateful that someone asked it. It feels like we're on a treadmill when it comes to this discussion about teacher negotiations. And using it as a basis to keep the budget squashed essentially one more year, but every year is that one more year. There are contract negotiations for teachers, administrators, as well as for professional staff. There seems to never be a year when we either don't have one of these negotiations in the current year or we have to be careful because we have one coming up next year. If we treat each impending negotiation as a major potential stumbling block for our school district, we will never get out of this loop. Let's stop using these future negotiations as the reason to hold us back. The negotiation processes will never go away. They're here to stay. We need to find a way to plan with them incorporated instead of holding back due to them. I think that this person had a really great point, except there's one part missing. The cost. There's a difference, a huge difference between the support staff contract, the administrator's contract and the teacher's contract. So strategically, it's better for our students, the staff and the communities to have a reasonable budget this year and look forward in anticipation of the negotiations next year. Because the teacher's contract costs approximately $600,000 more per year, while the administrator's contract is 50 and the, and the support staff, which includes the para professionals, is almost $100,000. This is not the year to boil it over. You can read the rest of this answer. But our hiring processes and exit interviews have shown that our hiring salaries are low. This is supported by feedback from candidates when they accepted positions in other districts, just like the third grade position I was telling you about earlier. Instead of joining us and we've, as we review local collective bargaining agreements, our first five steps are low comparatively, but we have really good benefits. So it's a balancing act. And just for the record, our benefits for paras, most districts that offer a couple dollars an hour more do not offer 85% of full healthcare. They only offer a single plan. So we're going to really be pushing advertising that our health insurance is much better than other districts for our para professionals. Over the past six years, all of the proposed contracts have passed, even in the middle of the pandemic. We want to thank the community for supporting the staff and students and reiterate that the trust that has been established is valued. It made a big difference. Currently, there's a fragile trust between the voters and the community. And it is important to remember that approximately 85% of our households don't have children in school. This trust must be respected and balanced as we will believe it will not, it will not pass the contract for teachers if the budget is too high, especially in a year. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it online. I couldn't see the bottom. Hold on. I got it. I got it. I'm good. So it's especially in a year with high inflation making things difficult for everyone. Negotiations are confidential and the information we can share is very limited and I'm sorry for that. All right, conclusion. I'm almost done. Next steps. We're going to meet with the admin team this evening. You've all signed up for different groups. Should be fun. And then if you have follow-up questions for this process, please email them to Mr. Angel by Sunday night. I know Annie had originally said Tuesday, but that won't work because we have NEAS coming on the Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving. So we're going to try to answer your follow-up questions on Monday so that you have the information in a timely manner. This Sunday. The follow-up questions should only be about the answers that you've been giving, given. So they should be more focused. Even Jamie only had 10. First time ever. I should have been quiet tonight. But having the NEAS visit is going to literally tie us up for two straight days. So we won't be able to answer anything on Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving. The school board will meet on Wednesday, November 30th. And hopefully if everyone feels settled, they'll recommend a budget to the budget committee on Thursday, December 1st. The Budcom will deliberate and prepare the budget to be presented to the community. In closing, it's important to remember the roles of the school board and the budget committee. Per RSA Chapter 32, the budget committee takes into consideration the recommendations from the administration and the school board and prepares the budget. It's a big job. The budget committee then presents the budget to the community, also a big job. The budget committee cannot direct the school board on how the funds are expended. This means the following. If the budget is significantly increased, the board decides whether or not to spend the money. If the budget is decreased, the school board decides what programs or positions to cut. The school board cannot change existing contracts. There are a number of important issues here to be addressed. Technology, parking at the high school in Bakersfield School, developing a strategy for funding priorities in the capital improvement plan. And it is our belief that we need the community to work collaboratively. We need the votes from all groups and members of the community, particularly if we want to pass the professional staff contracts. Thanks. I'm sorry. That was a little longer than I wanted it to be, but those were the big talking points that everybody felt like needed to be addressed. And I appreciate everyone's feedback and questions. They were, although there were 200 questions and it took almost two full days to answer them all. They did bring to light some things that were important and we found a 0.001% variance in the budget. And we'll adjust that before we send it to the board. Just a few little like $30,000 worth of things that needed to be moved around, maybe 40. All right. So next, we have, uh, we're going to have in the library, back of the library and in the two rooms over here, our administrators are each going to sit at one table. And I've paired the board members up with the Budcom member. And you'll have 20 minutes at each group. We'll, we'll give you a signal when to switch groups. So we can take a five-minute bathroom break and then go to the breakout groups.
Okay. One more thing is that following the three 20-minute times, then I would like each one of the budget committee members and possibly each one of the board members to have an opportunity to share with the whole group, um, some high level points, just a couple of high level points of what you got out of it. Not looking for a 20-minute digest, just a couple of minutes. We're not looking for a Tom Ambrose presentation. Just a couple of minutes. But let's hit those high level points so that we share them with one another so we can think about them over the next couple of weeks before we meet again on December 1st. So, um, let's move to our breakout groups.
Take a five-minute break first.
Do you want to take a five-minute break first and then we'll move to breakout room groups? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. We're ready. Okay, we're back from our. Hey, everybody. Can we reconvene here, please? We're missing. Okay. So we've just had a little opportunity to meet with the various administrators in small groups. And why don't we just start and, you know, see if you have, yeah, Ken, see if, see. And don't, you know, I mean, just some high level, you know, points if you have any. If you don't, you can also pass. I mean, no pressure. But if you found out something that you think would be worth sharing with the rest of the group, that would be great.
I enjoyed meeting here, but.
Talking to Mike. Bring the mic up to you.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Be on, Ken.
It's on?
Yeah.
I enjoyed meeting everybody. That was nice. My trophy didn't have a lot of questions. I kind of leaned on your husband to ask the questions and I did a lot of listening. I, I was impressed with what I heard.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody, Jen, Matt, Matt, and even the people I didn't meet for this process. I felt that it was transparent and honest. I, you know, got good feedback from them, from everybody I spoke with, getting paired with Rick also helped. As I'm the newbie here in this group, so I'd just like to say thank you. Keep it short and sweet.
Okay, great.
I enjoyed the whole process, especially meeting with the, um, the principal from the school, which is right around, and he's so happy there. The children are doing well, so that was really good to hear. I was a little dismayed talking with the athletic director. I come from a Massachusetts background where they contribute to the things in athletics. And it's where everything, everything is paid for here. It's really burdened to the taxpayers. It's wonderful for the students, but I come from a much different background.
Okay.
But it was a nice opportunity to speak with everyone.
Thank you.
It was great actually meeting with everybody and talking to them about their budgets and what some of the things that they maybe need or want and that they couldn't put in their budget needs, as Tom said, not wants. But one of the things that stand out the most is people, you know, they need the help. They have, as it was put, I have more money and not enough people. And it's not a problem that I'm used to. And I get that 100%. That's up to the school board and the, the contract negotiations and whatnot to, in order to try to attract more subs. I guess that's the biggest thing right now is getting subs. You know, they had spoken and said, you know, we, we may be fully staffed, but at any time we could have, you know, five or six teachers out, whether it's maternity leave or whatever. And it's the sub pool. They're all, you guys are all pulled from the same sub pool, right?
Yes.
So that's the issue is you just don't have enough in that sub pool. So maybe tweaking that number would help. I don't know.
Dan, we did, just so you know, the board gave $130 a day to our subs, which is much more than the surrounding areas. So we're actually doing better than other districts.
Okay.
But I would agree completely that I've never in 23 years had enough money and not enough people. And so we're really working hard. One thing that we do need to do is share very publicly, and I invite all of you to help us with this. We need to share that, that our para professionals get the same health benefits as teachers, which is not the same as other districts. So they might make 17, 50 or $18 an hour starting in another district. But at our $15, $15.25, the differential for full health insurance for a family, it's way more money. So we're going to really actively be promoting that benefit. HR and I have been talking about it and it came out of a teacher meeting. One of the teachers told us that they didn't realize the benefits for the paras and that they were going to call their friends and tell them to apply. And they said that we needed to get on that.
So in that sense, do you advertise a number of, for people who don't need insurance?
Well, that's interesting. So we, we want to, we want to have a conversation about that because right now, if you don't take the insurance, you get a differential, but it's not what you think it would be. So I think that's a great question for negotiations next year.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Jamie actually brought that up in our private meeting. He was thinking about that. And we don't want to say too much about negotiations publicly, but yes, we need to talk about it.
Sounds good.
I want to thank everybody that I'm with. That was amazing. And thank you, Dan, for suggesting it. I am so happy that we had the opportunity to do that. It was really great from a budget standpoint to really get to learn what really goes into the budget, rather than just sort of arbitrarily looking at numbers on a page. So, you know, to see how the administrators break it down within their teams, to learn that they really correlate their needs to the curriculum. That was amazing. I applaud them for doing that. And as Dan had said, to really understand, you know, what isn't built into the budget? What do we have to look for in the upcoming years? You know, what are their needs and requirements that they have? I asked a lot about staffing shortages, money within the budget, you know, it was just great. It was really helpful for me and I would, moving forward, I hope this is something that we continue and we get a broader sense. You know, we have the opportunity to meet with everybody and really, you know, rather, this was a great start. So I applaud you guys for doing this. Thank you.
I'm going to say it again. Thank you very much for pulling it together. I met, we all met with three people. Going to echo some of the things that were said with the high school. It was great to hear about how they went about doing the budget this year and they're making changes and improving and making it transparent, how they're spending their money and it's good for other teachers to see. Things that they're, you know, have their eye on are the scheduling and the class leveling. I think Tom mentioned that in the presentation, but it's definitely something to keep in mind for years, upcoming years. Had a great conversation with the district and really talking about the priorities and the amount of change that we're trying to push through. We can budget for it, but are we prepared for it? And I, they were lovely and it was great. So thank you for that. And we talked about capital improvements a little bit more and some of our options. So I think we'll be talking about that more in upcoming meetings. It was great to hear about the middle school and how well it's going. So thank you for that. And there, I think you said we're developing our own identity. And I think separating from the high school a little bit more is going to be a good thing for them. So thank you again. This was great. And I will pass it over to Annie.
I really enjoyed this opportunity. I always, I love meeting with our, with our staff anyway. I mean, I've, I've found it, every opportunity is just so great. I love going to subcommittee meetings for the school board because the staff is there and they give input. I mean, it's just amazing people that work in this district. And I want to thank them for staying out late tonight and being here for us and with us. I tended to focus on what kind of outcomes we're getting out of the money that we're investing for our kids. And I really wanted to hear about how evaluations are going, the teacher evaluations and how, it was great to hear how those are being used to help to enhance the strengths of, of the teacher and of, and to, the focus is not on gotchas, it's on how can I help you be even more effective? How can we help our kids learn better? And so it was really great to hear that kind of aspect, the whole idea of, I did find out from Diana that we hired six new subs today. Yay. So we've got some new subs. I know that the work has been really hard to try and find them and to try and find paras. I agree wholeheartedly that need to publicize the whole health benefit that we, that we give. Our benefits are amazing and they can't get them anyplace else. So hopefully that will help to attract people to come here and to work with us. I think our, our schools are operating really well and very, very slim staffing. And I appreciate how hard they're all working to try and keep that going and all the challenges that also ongoing with kids coming out of COVID and the learning gaps and that kind of thing. And I very much hope that we get that other third grade teacher at Memorial so we can have that interventionist freed up to do intervention. And, you know, I'm just glad we have these programs in place. I just hope we can staff them. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
Well, there's not much left to say now. It was really nice. It was really, really nice to be able to sit down. Also with a, you know, board member with a Budcom member because sometimes you have different questions, your thought process is different. We already know some things that you guys maybe don't know yet, you know? So it was really nice to hear the questions that were being asked. And it was nice to hear directly from, you know, we get, we get a lot of information, but we don't always get to hear it directly from the administrators because there's not always time for us to sit down and talk with them. Yes, they come to a lot of the subcommittee meetings and we get a lot of stuff accomplished. But there are questions that we don't get to ask them directly. So it was really great to be able to, to talk with them, to hear how they build their budgets. It's great to hear that they build them from scratch. That was, you know, I mean, I think a lot of us already knew that. But it was really great to see how they build them from scratch. That was, I think, my favorite part was looking, you know, seeing the spreadsheets that they use. Like that was, I, I love seeing that and how they really break it down, how they have the teachers really involved. You know, I really, I really love seeing all of that firsthand, right in person. So I hope we can continue to do more of this. It was really great.
Yeah, without repeating everything everybody said, I echo, I echo the comments. I, I think the format was very good. It certainly beats a living daylight out of listening to Mr. Ambrose give a three-hour presentation. So I'm very thankful for that.
I'm offended.
I, and you know, it was a lot of talk about the issues that, that, you know, not only the results, but what's going on with the teachers, what's going on with the paras, what's going on with the intervention? What's going on with special education and what's going on with the COVID losses? And how are we accounting for that and where is the money and what do we have? That was refreshing. I already suggested to the superintendent that the format is, is good. And, you know, maybe we should figure out a way to do this even outside of budget meetings. I mean, it is helpful to have these types of one-on-ones with the, the administrators and, and even. to have these types of one on ones with the uh the administrators and uh and even for the teachers for that matter, it would help. It helped the board members do a better job as board members and it helped the administrators and teachers see what we struggle with as board members. So um, it's well done. Thank you.
So same here. Thank you to everyone. I was actually nervous about this format. This is my sixth year doing this and this is the first time that we've done this format and it was, I I didn't feel like I had a lot of time to prepare for it. But the administrators that I spoke with were all really well prepared. Um, and they had a lot of information to um offer, so that I thought it was was really valuable. I would actually like maybe to have someone from the music and or fine arts um department. I would have liked to have spoken with them on um, I have my spreadsheet for athletics. But I would, you know, I would be interested in knowing what's going on with music and what their challenges are as well and the, you know, drama, etc. But I, yeah, I thought it was great. Um, I appreciated appreciated everyone's participation.
Yeah, I I enjoyed getting to meet the principals. And uh, listening to how the intervention's being implemented and uh the resulting improvements that are happening. We went over some scores uh at Bakey and the and some really impressive advancements there. The uh, I also was interested in how the principals build their budgets. And the work that goes into that and the man and the uh, the kind of the analysis, the sheet that to work with some of these folks and how it works and the different levels that you can click on and see down into the details. Also, the curriculum intervention is happening and how the data is being used to help the students. All is really solid and I was
Okay, I'm going to echo everything everyone else has said. I just kind of want to bring up something that from what I'm hearing from people on um the Budget Committee say. And so this is great. I know I moaned and groaned about it, but it was, it was great.
Well, if you had your comfy chair, you would have been more.
Yeah, I would have been happier. Um, but anyways, I I do just want to say from being on the Budget Committee before and being on the school board, I look at things with a little bit of a different lens. As Dawn said, sometimes we know things on the school board. That maybe we we've talked with some people, so um, some of these things maybe I'm now taking for granted. I just kind of do want to echo or comment on something that Dan said. That it's up to the school board to get the con to get the contract um for future. I just want to say the importance. That's not the school board that does all this. As as a member of what I've seen being on Budget Committee and being on school board, it's about putting something on a ballot that's going to pass. So I could want all the things in the world, but if if the voters aren't going to pass it, I'm not going to vote for it. Would I love to see all these great, wonderful things that sure, but if it's not going to pass to the voters, so it really is important to put something through to the voters and don't, don't think that the school board really has all the power because I really don't think that we do. And I think it's really important that we think about our community members. And I know that's my most important thing when I'm putting anything through for a budget. It's not what I personally want to vote for. I want to put something for it that's going to pass through the voters. Uh, so I just wanted to make that different comment, but thank you for bringing this together. I know I moaned.
Sorry, I had a work thing. Um, I really enjoyed that as well. I was with Courtney and I really enjoyed we met with the high school, the district and the middle school and I enjoyed hearing the priorities from their point of view and how we as a budget and a board can continue to support those priorities.
Um, I I was with Ken and he had a list of about 15 questions, so I get too many my questions, but uh two I did ask was um, did the process add value for the administrators? And I think there was a resounding yes. And then the second was um, and we had facilities too, but uh, did the budget you proposed adequately meet the needs of the students within your buildings? And there was a resounding, yes, I can live with it, but I could use more. So I want to make sure that's clear. And uh, there's definitely a need for a longer discussion on facilities and the needs of the buildings. Um, but what I will say is, and I know like probably everybody gets tired of me saying this, but this was the best collaboration I've seen in such a long time. And there's so many differing opinions in the room of um what happens or what doesn't happen, what should happen or what shouldn't happen. Um, and this is the best method of figuring that out.
Dan, thank you. Can we just meet with the principals? And I'm like, well, I don't know, can we do that?
Yeah.
And I want to say I went to the principals and said, Dan kind of wanted this and I'm wondering about it and they were all like, yeah, let's do it. Because they all worked in Timberlane, so they knew.
I do actually thank you to all the administrators who stayed late and you guys were like right on with the answers for our questions and stuff, which was amazing. So thank you very much. Y'all can go home now. Go home now.
Thank you at the beginning.
Yeah. Okay, um, that would be, I believe, the end of hours. So the Budget Committee is adjourned. Oh, our next meeting is on December 1st, 7 o'clock here. And um, we're going to begin talking about the budget. So that's what the purpose is. And we're adjourned. Thank you so much.
If you have follow up questions, please email them to Matt by Sunday night.
Yeah, Sunday night.
Want to try to get them back in so you have time to think about the answers.
Alright, um, I think by law we have to have a public comment. So
Okay.
we go into that. Um, so um, anyone would like to make a public comment? Step up to the podium.
Were you making a public comment? Okay.
I really want to give my just found out Marie's my neighbor.
Oh, really?
Not like next door.
She's super nice.
My neighborhood. Yeah. Bye, bestie.
Okay. Alright, so I have uh, I've had a couple of requests, so I will put this out to the board. To get the feel, um, I've had a couple of requests to push off the couple of things that are left on the agenda to the next meeting so we can all go home because it's been a very
I second that.
long day.
Can we, can, is, are we going to give JJ?
Oh, JJ, yes. JJ, please.
Waiting all this time. Council Representative Report, JJ.
Sorry, I have a pretty long list of stuff.
Come on.
Firstly, we wanted to uh thank the superintendent for helping the Student Council acquire Student Council themed t-shirts. I'm wearing it right now. Uh, they came out amazing. Uh, Fanny, you want to see it? They have her name on the back. So they're they're pretty neat. Um, a more formal thank you will be coming from the full Student Council, but uh, we just got those in today. So I just wanted to initially just say thank you.
Tell them they're welcome, okay?
Um, secondly, I wanted to talk about our Waterville Valley Overnight Trip, which we took last Wednesday and Thursday, which was the 9th and 10th. Uh, the New Hampshire Association of Student Councils, NHASC, annually holds their Waterville Valley State Conference where all the member schools of NHASC uh come and share ideas, meet new people from different schools, uh, learn new skills, do community service, etc. Um, this was the first one since before COVID, so we really had a great time. At this conference, the overall theme was communication and we had a great time learning from the other schools um that were in attendance, uh, different ways they communicate better within their councils um with their with their students that they represent. And uh, general communication with in life with the teachers, friends, coworkers, bosses, etc. We also heard from, we also heard from and I did two workshops with a wonderful motivational speaker named Kate Garnes, who did an absolute amazing job. Um, she was really inspirational and upfront and made everyone s- feel seen, heard and understood. Uh, we also learned about a community service project called the Kate Sherwood Project, which we are looking into the possibility of bringing to Sanborn, which it's a really interesting thing that I'm sure that I'll talk more about in the future if we adopt that. Overall, we had an amazing time and everyone except the seniors are really excited to go again next year. We're really sad that we can't go again because it was a really great time. Our next conference, which is similar to Camp Lincoln, which you guys might recall, I talked about a couple of months ago, a month ago. Will be in February at Timberlane, if I recall correctly. From Ms. Mulvey, uh, the biology students are really excited because right now they are starting to run their own labs that they had the opportunity to design themselves and test the optimal range of the catalase enzyme. Uh, many are using potato catalases while others are using different sources such as liver, broccoli, yeast, pineapple, pumpkin, onion and many others. Uh, they're really excited and find it really awesome that they're able to work independently and build their lab skills and like from the ground up, see the whole process through. Ms. Mulvey said that she's really impressed and thinks it's amazing to watch uh all of the students' confidence grow in the lab. Uh, from Dr. Young and Ms. Martin, Sanborn's math team participated today, actually, earlier today in our second math meat of the year. Uh, for the first half of the season, which is the first three to four meets, uh, we're doing them remotely, so we sit in a room upstairs and we have a separate room where all the people do it. Um, so that's, it's really great. A lack of buses at several schools are the reason for this, but uh, as we get later into the math team season, the league will be constantly reevaluating whether we have the ability to return to pre-COVID in-person live meets at the various host schools. It also appears that uh luckily this year's uh state championship map meet, which is going to be in March, will be returning to Plymouth State live as it was pre-COVID. So we're really excited about that. The math team championship meet was one of, if not, if I had called the last school activity before school shut down from COVID. It was, I think, two days before we shut down was the date of it. So they are, and we are really, really, really excited to go back there. That's going to be an awesome time. Youth in Action and SOROC hosted the Great American Smokeout Event for grades um 7 to 12, including students pledging to remain substance free and taking part in an interactive demonstration about the effects of different substances on uh their lungs and their health. The various music departments are very excited for their upcoming winter music concerts. Uh, they wanted to make sure that all you knew that you are absolutely invited and any members of the community that are listening are also invited to come to any of those concerts. Uh, those are on the following dates. The Middle School Concert Band is on Tuesday, December 6th at 6:00 PM. The High School Symphonic Band at uh Tuesday, December 6th at 7:00 PM. Uh, the Middle School and High School Concert Choirs on Tuesday, December 13th at 7, uh, sorry, 6:00 PM. And the Memorial Band and Chorus Thursday, December 15th at 6:00 PM. From Ms. Grella and Ms. Trudeau, uh, NHS, National Honor Society and Key Club are assisting uh Ms. Trudeau and Ms. Grella with after school tutoring. Uh, we are helping students in various subjects such as chemistry and math and among other things, uh, as one on one peer tutors. Uh, doing it as community service and it's thus far been a really big success and they're really excited to keep that program going. From Ms. Brett and Guidance, uh, we had a very successful uh, New Hampshire I Applied Day where many seniors came down to the library after attending weeks worth of college lab put on by the academic counselors. To date, Sanborn students have sent out over 195 applications to over 75 different institutions and universities. And they're really excited to see where students uh or which student, which paths students uh take. And finally, the High School Fall Play is starting tomorrow, Saturday and Sunday. Um, the show is uh Radium Girls, if I recall correctly. Uh, there's posters all over the school for it. Um, and the showings are tomorrow, Friday, November 18th at 7:00 PM, Saturday, November 19th at 7:00 PM and Sunday, November 20th at 1:00 PM.
I have one quick thing to say. And it's worth the extra minute. Mrs. Bavere said, "An advisor from another school approached me to discuss our students at the the group event that you were at." The advisor from the other school said that she had that her council had encountered some negativity from another school and wanted to let her know that they singled out the Sanborn students as the most open and welcoming group at the conference. So her students told them that. I was told that they were polite and friendly and that we should be proud. I shared that with them and their smiles were huge and I told them I was incredibly proud of them and so are we. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Meeting adjourned.
Hold on a second.
I got a few pages.
No, you don't. Uh, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the library at Sanborn Regional High School. Uh, next meeting of the Budget Committee will be held on Thursday, December 1st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. And we are now
Thank you.
Go home and sleep.